Good evening. It's now six o'clock and time for our regularly scheduled board meeting, July 6th. Tonight, I've asked James Summers to open us up with the invocation and pledge. Who would stand?
Bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please bless those in attendance this evening. Please look over the decision makers to make the best decision for the community, the best interests at heart and mind. Please look over our servicemen at home and abroad. Please bless those that are need your blessing the most. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 20th, 2017, regularly scheduled board meeting. Do you anyone have any changes, corrections, or anything that needs to be addressed? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second?
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. Second, Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to consent. We're gonna pull for discussion item five and nine. Do I have any others that wish to be pulled for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull ten and eleven, please.
What number?
Ten and eleven. Ten and eleven.
All right, need a motion to approve two through four, six, seven, eight, twelve and thirteen.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right. Item number five, approval of subordination agreement with Catherine, is her last name?
Hagenauer.
Hagenauer, state housing and centers program client. Turn our attention to County Attorney Jimmy Favat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem, I wanted to discuss this, I'm okay with the idea of subordination in the matter, but the document itself is not correct. First of all, it says that y'all have received $12,000 underneath the subordination agreement, so if you receive $12,000, it would be a satisfaction of the lien that you have here. What happened with, when the closing agent did the ship loan, they put our lien in front of First Federal's first mortgage lien. So the satisfaction is fine, I mean, excuse me, the subordination is fine, the form just needs to be redone entirely. So if you would approve the subordination, that would be fine with changes made by council.
So basically, we're gonna, we got our $12,000.
You don't get $12,000.
We don't get $12,000.
This is the lien, that's the point of all of this, is under ship program, the applicant got $12,000, you know, as part of acquisition of the property, and then our lien becomes subordinate to the first mortgage holder.
Okay.
And then it gets given, you know, forgiven, over the, you know, over the years.
They put us in front.
So, I mean, if it was, if we got $12,000, I could change this to a satisfaction agreement and wouldn't have to worry about it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Fleming?
So, so you saying that we don't have the 12, but all you saying that we just, we just satisfied with the lien, but the wording that needs to be corrected?
The, there's nothing about us receiving $12,000, other than it says it in there, we did not.
Okay.
It just needs to be, the language tweaked and provide the appropriate subordination agreement. And I'd need to tweak that to make it actually what happened. Okay.
To make First Federal the first party and us the second party.
That's correct.
That's all it's doing.
That's all.
I make a motion to make council changes to the subordination agreement.
Second. Got a motion to approve the agreement with changes made by council, made by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to, all right, one more, next one you pull, nine.
Number nine.
Approval to amend current agreement with EMS to include hardware and EOC software services. Is that the one you wanted to pull?
Yes, sir.
Turn our attention again to Jimmy Favat, County Attorney.
All right, thank you. The problem with this particular agreement is it's an amendment, and I'm fine, again, with the style of amendment, except that when it's written by other software companies and other things, there are certain requirements that we can't allow them to have liens on our county property as we pay for the county property. There's a few other little minor things that have to do with a warranty and an indemnity provision that needed to be amended. Again, I think Mr. Summers would request that, you know, the basics of it are fine, but it just needs to be tweaked just a little bit, just a little bit.
Mr. Chairman.
And then we can move forward.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes, sir.
This is, I love attorneys. Let me say that first. This is less of an issue than what we have been dealing with CSX for months on end, which is hopefully gonna be remedied tomorrow, where we've had to wrangle back and forth for a long time. And these will occur from time to time where bits and pieces and verbiage will need to be amended slightly. So in this particular case, like last, I would ask that you approve it with changes from council, because he will have to contact them as well, but at least then it doesn't have to come back. The basics of it will be done then.
Does he have anything else?
Oh, he's just, I was trying to explain a little bit longer.
He's gonna go through all the details, which are unnecessary. He's gonna have to be satisfied in the end, anyway.
Okay.
All right, most wishes of the board.
I have a motion to approve with changes made by council.
Make a motion with the proper changes.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll go second.
Motion to approve by, with council changes by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion?
I had one from both of you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Richardson.
Are we gonna continue to send out agreements that we're gonna free approve to our county attorney?
No disrespect intended, any way, shape, or form.
Without coming back and seeing them before they are approved, or not coming back and seeing them at all? So we're blindly approving these?
No, he's not changing the content of it, he's just changing the overall, the overall agreement.
And the product are gonna remain the same. It's some of the other minor issues in it that are gonna change, such as the lien that he mentioned.
They can't, they can't put a lien on county property.
And property and things of that nature that just have to be taken out.
Okay. I didn't get a full explanation, so me being an analytical person, just wondering if we're gonna continue to do that, so thank you.
But, when it continue, it just, every one's case by case. I wouldn't motion to approve the content and have him go back and change it, but this here is not, the changes that he's gonna be making to this are just the way it needs to be to start with.
Okay, I was just looking for clarification, that's all.
I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Item number 10, approval, TDC recommendation. Turn our attention now to Commissioner Richardson.
Item 10?
You said, I think, 10 and 11.
Yes, I did, 10 and 11. I just had, the only reason why I wanted to pull this was because there's a whole lot involved in this. I talked to Dr. Jackson this past week about it, and had some questions for him. I wanna make sure that he clarifies what we are approving, because it is quite a few recommendations involved in it. So, Dr. Jackson, as we look at this strategic, yeah, give it a second, the strategic market plan, I'm fine with this, I don't have too much problem with it. I do have a question about, well, it's all part of the item, the agenda. There's no item numbers involved in it, but I would have to go to, point your attention to where the graphs are, with the funding, that would be the approval of 2017, 2018 recommended tourist development budget.
Yes.
I am curious why we don't have a projected actual for 2017. We have a pretty big blank part there. I did want you to also explain the market coordinator position as we discussed yesterday and help us, help me understand, help make sure the public understands this position, since it would be a new position. Am I understanding correct?
Yes.
Also, as we move forward through this, the description, the job description, your job description, that I did not have any idea who this was, and as you're explaining, I'll move.
Okay. Let me, let me try to respond in the water. Going back to the budget, the TDC recommended budget, which will be discussed at the budget workshop in detail, this particular budget in the area projected actual for 2017, this format is, for the first time, a line item budget. Historically, the TDC has not had a line item budget, and so this year, we have created a line item budget, and we, this year had some line items, so we really did not have a historical picture. And so we did not attempt to create one for 17. And so as we were moving forward, we were creating a line item budget.
Thank you.
As the Florida statutes require, that all TDCs first should create a strategic marketing plan, and I think that the Board of County Commission really should commend the Tourist Development Council, because this year, they created and adopted a strategic marketing plan, and what you will see is that this budget actually funds, start, begin to fund this strategic marketing plan. And so that's what you see. You have now a strategic marketing plan, and you have a funding mechanism to implement that strategic marketing plan.
Thank you.
To answer your question, as it relates to the two positions, once again, the Tourist Development Council, as it, as this board has empowered the Economic Development Office to oversee and facilitate the day-to-day operations, that basically operation had no director, and basically what we've done is, what I would like to call institutionalize the leadership of that by creating a job description, the Tourist Development Council really wanted to know what was the responsibility of the director of the TDC, and what we have done is memorialize that by creating a job description. So be it me or whomever, this is the job description for that position.
Is this, this position that you currently hold, will this always be the economic development director?
It's left up to the Board of County Commission.
Were you talking about the position that he's holding as the economic director or TDC?
The TDC.
Right. And the second position is the position that we are recommending, and if you look at the strategic plan, one of the recommendations in the strategic plan is that we seriously consider creating a position, a marketing coordinator's position, to really assist with facilitating a real marketing effort for Swanee County. One of the first steps that we will need to do is move forward with the implementation of a destination marketing website, and in doing that, once the consultant firm actually build that destination marketing website, then that website will need to be managed, content management. Basically, we will need to be doing social marketing, media marketing, we will need to be organizing fam tours, content, content management, a number of what I would call marketing activities would occur. And so in doing that, we are recommending this marketing coordinating, coordination position. We are recommending that the TDC co-share that with economic development to also provide assistance to economic development. And it's a, it's a little higher level position, because that individual would actually be doing the day-to-day marketing of Swanee County.
In reference to the budget to the actual statement, oh, page numbers on here, but it looks like it's current, April, May, June figures, year-to-date. Could you just, could you explain the difference between advertising promotion in general and advertising promotional for events for me? I, I do understand that in looking at the two of them in the account under the budget, that it looks to be some of these advertising would be, obviously, a lot of these advertising are magazines, at least publications. And then, that's just under the general, advertising and promotion for events involve the North Central Florida Advertiser, the City of Live Oaks, Spirit of the Swanee, Country Road Films, I'm scratching my head about whether those are revenues or expenditures?
Expenditures. Remember, basically, we had local event funding for advertising and marketing, and where we actually supported local event.
So these are the specific, the amount that we give through the grants?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. So we only had a, probably, think about three magazines that we actually did some advertising. And the reason for that is that we don't have a place to land. We don't have a website for individuals to land.
Understood.
So we're really dragging our feet on doing some really long-term media and social marketing.
What are the general, what general advertising promotion do we do under the, under the heading above that? Is it just, just general advertising for Swanee County?
Yes.
The reason why I ask that is because of the concern that I have for the amount of money that we have paid. We spent more money on office supplies than we have on advertising. I know that this is the beginning, but I'm, I would be, I would feel a lot better if you would encourage me that more is going to be spent in the coming years, because the more information we get out to the public, more opportunity we have for our tourism.
Well, if you, if you look at the upcoming budget, and that's why we went to a line item budget, if you go back and look at the new proposed line item budget.
Yes, sir.
And look at the marketing and advertising, the proposed expenditure, you, if you especially look at the pie chart, you will see that was, that's upward of almost 80% of the dollars we are recommending to be advertising and marketing. And that's why we did the pie chart, so that it would be pictorially.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, that the, a lot of this comes, goes to our actual events themselves and the grants.
Right.
But it's just 15, 15% of the, of the total grants that are spent on just general advertising, you think that's gonna be enough? Do you really think that that's going to be enough? $15,000 for general advertising?
You mean this year?
For next year.
There's more than $15,000 going.
What's in the budget?
No, no, no.
The requested fiscal year 2018?
For social media.
Social media, 2,500, advertising budget, 10,000?
Yeah, but your grant dollars that are going out, that's for your marketing.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying that.
All of your grant dollars that go out are not for funding the event?
Right.
They're for marketing, to market the event.
I'm not talking about that. I'm speaking specifically of our general advertising of our, of what the TDC does for our county, and the general, the general advertising budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understand, basically, the way we have structured the program now, any event that we will support, the dollars that will be spent will be spent for advertising and marketing Swanee County.
Yes.
As well as the event. Now, we do have some dollars in there, the $15,000.
Yes.
That will do some social marketing media, as well as doing some campaigns, and basically utilize your, your, your website actually to do that, and as well as your PR firm to actually do some campaigns throughout the year. But we want to actually leverage some of the venues that, that we have in the county to market Swanee County. For instance, we are in the process of reviewing our new grant program, which is to $10,000 and up, what we call a signature sponsorship program. The requirements on that is that they have to market or advertise 60 miles or more beyond Swanee County.
Mm-hmm.
And, and basically, what we're doing is, if they're spending $80,000 in marketing and advertising, and basically if we can leverage 10,000 to $15,000 to, to, to market along with them, basically, that works for us. And so we, we don't really separate that out. Swanee County is actually being advertised. And so when you go back and you look at the, you look at the strategic plan, the strategic plan talks about identifying our assets, and basically really supporting our assets and marketing those assets globally, which advertises Swanee County.
I'm leading up to something that's in a different agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
I believe, I don't know if it's a part of this agenda or not, and this is the, this item, approval of the, the grants for the River Reunion.
Mm-hmm.
Is it part of this? Is that, is that proposal part of this?
Part of the budget?
Of this TDC, this consent.
It's one of the, it's one of the recommendations, yes.
Okay, so I just wanna make for sure. I wanna state this, and I want, and I know that it doesn't affect them this year.
Right.
But having gone out to the River Reunion and having seen what we saw out there, this is a terrible time of the year to do this, obviously terrible day of the, not terrible time of the year, but terrible day of the week to choose, I would have to assume that's the problem with it. But I would also say that on the heels of that, what we saw with the Catfish Festival exceeded what we saw with the River Reunion by heaps. We had 50-some-odd vendors, they had 11. We had, we had several, I don't know how many exactly people that they said, and I know, realize that they, they failed to get their grant money, but they would have only received $2,500 based upon the current grant proposal. So I would like to see some equalization there.
Yeah. And Commissioner, let me, let me just explain this to you. And so basically, when we, there are two frames of thought. At the end of the day, what really drives local TDC dollars is heads in bed. I mean, folks come to town, that generates sales tax dollars, gas tax dollars, I mean, so that's good economic development. But at the end of the day, what drives TDC dollars is heads in bed.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we talk about our sponsorship and our signature grants, the 10,000 and up.
Yes, sir.
A part of that is really driving heads in bed.
Yes.
Okay? And so it does several things. It, it brings a whole bunch of folks to town, it's multi-day, it fills hotel rooms, gets heads in bed. In reality, those are events that the bulk of our dollars should be going into, okay? The local event expenditures should be minimal, okay? And it is, it should be limited to promotion and advertising. Most of those, they don't put heads in bed, which means they don't drive any real additional dollars for tourist development taxes. Now, do they get folks to the area to spend dollars and some economic development? Yes. The other thing is that now we are requiring them to use the dollars for promotion and advertising. So whether or not they get 10,000 or 15,000 individuals to the event, if they spend those dollars advertising and promoting Swanee County, that was the primary objective.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that completely. I don't understand what I saw this Tuesday.
Yes.
In difference to what we saw back in, in April, I guess, with the, with that particular festival.
Right.
Was a huge difference, but one, one qualified for five, the other one qualified for half. And so I, I just would.
And, and really, that's, and that's their, their, the application, they drive the application process, we don't drive it.
One's got a 35-year history and one's got a two-year history, too.
I realize that, but what we look at is, should be not the application. We do understand that there is a history here, but I also, there are also numbers, there are also qualifying numbers.
Right.
As well, so.
Yeah, but you can't qualify numbers that, on an event that hadn't happened yet. I'm saying you got a one, what, you count the festivals in its second year?
Third.
Third year. So I mean, those aren't historical numbers, like you can run back on something else, but like you said, the application process, they drive their own application. I mean, they, they make their. I mean, they, they make their request, and then the TDC decides if they're going to fund it at a, at that level or at a lesser level. I mean, there's a, and then it comes to the board, and the board, the TDC doesn't, I shouldn't say they fund it, they make a recommendation to us, and then we fund it.
I understand the process.
So I mean, ultimately, it, it doesn't lie with the TDC. If there, if they were underfunded, and you feel that way, that was, this board made the final decision to fund them who were underfunded.
They were underfunded because they failed to put an application in proper timing, but that.
Well, yeah, well.
I'm not talking about their, what funding they received or did not receive, I'm talking about what funding would have been available to them versus what funding was available to the River Union based upon numbers and.
But what I'm saying is that they could have applied for whatever dollar amount if they would have justified spending X amount of dollars for advertising and promotion.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I have a motion to approve, TDC recommendations.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to the next item, item eleven, authorization to purchase utility bed truck for solid waste. Budget impact, funded by solid waste grant. Turn our attention back to Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just had a question, a couple of questions. First of all, what grant are we dealing with, Mr. Harris? Is it one that, to come or one that's already here?
It's one that we've been obtaining for a number of years, and it's ninety, ninety thousand nine hundred, is that the right number? Each year comes in, we buy equipment from time to time with it.
The second question would be, what are we doing currently with our needs for dealing with these? I assume you're throwing a welding machine, you're looking like throwing a welding machine up on top of this, taking these out and fixing dumpsters and.
You're on a different agenda item.
The number eleven? Or is it?
Well, number eleven is the, the truck, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the truck under solid waste at this point. So you're talking about pulling a trailer for construction repairs. What are we currently doing right now with the construction repairs?
We have a truck, we have a truck and a trailer that we're using, but we added another man in the last meeting.
Okay, and so this is for that?
Honestly, to create some efficiencies, we can split these guys up. Sometimes you need all three in one location, other times it's more efficient to send one to pick up the materials that they're need, and need a forming concrete and other things, and the other two can be onsite working.
I understand, I just, the only question, the reason why I had this question is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, if that can be spent in other areas that, or on other equipment that's more necessary. So now that you're.
It's a great question, and honestly, we, we have a balance that we carry there, and occasionally we'll try to use some of it.
That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Tim.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
This is not a dodge, it'll be worth it.
All right, did we have anything else? Moving on to constitutional officer items, turn our attention now to Clerk Court, Barry Baker.
Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, it's that time of the year that we have to take and, and set the proposed millage rate in order for the property appraisers to take and, and prepare the trim notice to take and be sent out. And using the values provided by Mr. Jenkins's office and the formulas provided to us by DOR, the current rollback rate is nine point oh six nine one mils. It's where that you will remember that the rollback rate is that millage rate, which when applied to the total amount of taxable value of property excluding new construction, would produce the same amount of dollars as the previous year. The gross taxable value for this, for this year would be one billion, six hundred and sixty-eight million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars, and each mill generates about one million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that's an approximate number. I just want to remind you that, that we are required to budget at ninety-five percent or less, according to state rules, and you may lower the millage rate at any time throughout the year, but once you set the millage rate tonight, you cannot increase it until, until this time next year. So I just wanted to bring that to you, Tim. This time I'll turn it over to y'all.
All right. Any questions from the board for Mr. Baker? Wishes to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for him to give me that number again. He said nine point oh six?
Nine point oh six, nine one mils is the current rollback rate.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Mr. Harris.
Just a brief comment. I had run a simple conservative inflation rate of one point five percent. Your current year revenue was fourteen million, two sixty-three and change at ninety-five percent. If you added a one point five percent inflation rate, you're at fourteen million, four seventy-seven. So that's an additional two hundred thousand dollars, just to cover the cost of inflation going forward. The nine point oh six nine one as the rollback rate is a fairly conservative number. It's only just over a hundred thousand dollars between where you are currently. And I just offer that as information.
Mr. Chairman, I, I may.
You may.
Move this thing along a little bit. I held it up a little bit this evening. I, I don't see, I understand inflation rate and everything, but I see that we can probably find that, those funds somewhere else. I would believe that it would be good for us to just leave it alone this year and keep it at nine mils.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, it is.
I got a motion, set the mill, tentative millage rate at nine mils. Do I have a second? Mr. Bisher, I'll pass the gavel to you. I'll make a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner. Richardson, seconded by Chairman Gamba. That's all signified by, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, I have it. All opposed, same side. I'll give it back to you.
Thanks, sir. All right, we set the tentative millage rate at nine mils.
Mr. Chairman, the second part of it is where we, we have to set the dates for the dates, times, and locations for the tentative and final budget hearing. It's where that these, these dates are, it's a fairly tight timeline that we have to meet. In order to meet DOR's timeline and also meet the time requirements for having the budget advertised in the newspaper, and also to not conflict with the school's budget calendar, the clerk's office is proposing that you set the tentative budget hearing for September seventh at five-thirty, here at the judicial annex, and the final budget hearing for September nineteenth at five-thirty, also at the, here at the judicial annex prior to the regular board meeting. The tentative is September seventh at five-thirty, and the final would be September nineteenth, if that's what the board.
And these dates meet all, every, all our states.
Saw the requirements.
All the requirements.
It's where we were having to wait because the school was taking and setting their, their dates today, so.
Right.
That's why we, we were having to wait until the last minute to get those dates. All these dates and times would be conflicted.
I don't have any problem with the dates, if y'all don't.
Nope.
No.
Got a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Hey, if I could, just, just to take and reiterate, September seventh at five-thirty here at the judicial annex, or the tentative budget hearing, and the final will be September nineteenth at five-thirty, also here at the judicial annex. All right, is there any other questions?
Oh, sure. Thank you. This time I move on to staff reports, item fifteen, Catherine Allen.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Today we got caught in the rain coming back from Save-A-Lot because we've started with our family nutrition program, looking at point of purchase, so places where people go where they're actually purchasing food, so that we can help them make good decisions, not only from a nutrition standpoint, but also from stretching their food dollar. So we are assisting, and we've been at Save-A-Lot twice. We've had an amazing reception from the shoppers there, as well as the staff that have been there, so it's been a really positive experience, and it's amazing how many people have come back in after they've tried the product that we're showcasing and either bought the product to, to then go home and make, or that they've come back this time and said, oh, we made that last time, and I never thought that my kids would like it, or that kind of thing. So we'll be doing some more of those, including some grocery store tours, looking around at some of the different grocery stores. But we stepped out with that one, and it's been a really great, a great program. Also, just a heads up, our Master Gardener class is starting up. This is a fifteen-week training where folks receive full-day training, they have to pass a final exam, and then they give, in the first year, seventy-five hours back to the community. Every year after that, they have to give thirty-five hours of community service back to the community. And so it's a real positive program, but if you know of somebody who is interested, if you'd pass them our way, because that starts towards the end of July, so we do need to get them registered. Camps have been in full swing with the summer camps for kids. Next week, we have quilt-in-a-week camp, and yes, it's not just for girls. We do have fellows that go to that, because one of the, and it's been interesting because one of the, the, the field trips that we take is to Adams Upholstery, and let me tell you, there's all dudes in there, and they're doing custom upholstery for boats and cars, and so it really shows kids different careers. So we always look at career exploration, always look, you know, at, at different things. We've got breakfast day camp coming up, and that's a regional one. We started that one, kind of a field-to-fork day camp, and so other counties have joined in, so there's five counties that will be joining us for that, and we're showcasing a lot of different commodities, including a trip to Shenandoah Dairy, to the milking parlor over there. So thank you, guys, for being willing to do that. We also have Pony Camp and All About Pets Camp. The All About Pets Camp is for the little guys, so we call them the cloverbuds, but they're, we've extended the, the age range, so that's the five-to-nine-year-olds that are going to that one. We have six youth that qualified and are going to the State 4H Horse Show next weekend. We've also had a very successful Camp Cherry Lake, and if nobody's ever been to Cherry Lake, it is a beautiful camp over in Madison. It's a residential camp, meaning they stay overnight for a week. And this year, we had a lot of newbies. These are kids that this was their first time, in some cases, away from their parents for the first time, and we had kids on the last day that were crying, saying they didn't want to go back home. So I, I definitely think that that was a success. We are, we are only one person away from being fully staffed, so we are jazzed. So I'll be introducing some of those agents as, as we have time at the next board meetings, but I did want to mention that we did have Dee Breton join us, and then Derby will be next week for the 4H position. I did want to mention also, the Hayfield Day will be coming up, July twenty-seventh, so that's one of our newbies that are involved in that one, so they're jumping in with both feet. So without further ado, I want to introduce you to our most recent newbie. I'm, I've decided that I'm calling the extension office, all of the group there, the Dream Team, because I think that we've, we've really gotten some great folks, and as we look forward, I think that we're going to have some contenders for national kinds of awards, because these are really great folks. And that brings me to our, our latest great folks. This is Kim Griffin. Kim is an extension agent, too, for Family and Consumer Sciences, so I'm going to let her say a few words. So please help us to welcome Kim. We're excited she's here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kim Griffin, as Catherine stated. Born and raised in Fort White, Florida, small-town girl. Graduated from Columbia High School, studied nutrition at Florida State University, got a graduate degree in public health from the University of South Florida. And actually, I've, most of my career has been in public health and nutrition, so I have worked for the Department of Health, Women, Infant, and Children Supplemental Nutrition Program, WIC program, and I've also had the pleasure of working at the Swanee County Department of Health for many years. So I'm, I'm not new to the area, I'm very familiar with Live Oak and Swanee County. Again, born and raised in Fort White, my family is still there, most of my family is still there. I have a sister that is an agent in Orange County, so extension is in the family as well. And I'm just really looking forward, being in this position, looking forward to working with the citizens of Swanee County on some nutrition and health and wellness initiatives, as well as improving their financial knowledge, and really, again, looking forward to working with the Swanee County community and community leaders.
Welcome to Swanee County.
Welcome.
Again, you know, great folks, we're really excited about the caliber of folks that we've been able to acquire, and just wanted to say thank you, guys. You know, we were sweating it there for a little bit because of the budget cuts at the state level, and we got all three of our positions funded, and part of that is because of your support, and also because of the work that the folks before them have done, that they said, no, no, we got to make sure that we fund Swanee County. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to general business. Discuss possible board action, mutual assistance agreement with Columbia County. Turn our attention to Public Safety Director James Summers.
Commissioners, Chairman, this agreement is with Columbia County to help them respond to, at, by request, it originally started by automatic aid, which basically, they immediately get a call, they tone us instead of toning Columbia County, but the call load for the, the areas aren't equal for the coverage areas. Being our station in Welburn is located right, pretty close to the county line, their closest station is four and a half miles away from the county line, the automatic aid agreement, in, in my personal opinion, is not fair on both sides. So what we would like to do would be at request only, which is as was stated in this mutual aid agreement. If they need us, we will respond as a request, not on an automatic aid agreement.
Currently, what we've been on is automatic aid?
Current, no, sir, we are not on automatic, we are on a request-only, a mutual aid.
So your requests must stay the same.
So the request would stay the same. This agreement is an updated agreement. It'll cover our EMS and fire associated with on request only. Hazard materials, things like that. So this is just basically an updated agreement for Columbia County.
Got you.
I got a, I have a question. Commissioner Sessions, are there any limitations on distance?
We can discuss that. Usually, when most counties do an automatic, or a mutual aid agreement, they, they don't have a distance. You know, really with Columbia County, I would like to see, you know, over to the fifty percent line, center of their county, would kind of be the farthest that we would respond, just kind of their, their west side, I guess you would say.
Yeah, the reason I ask, I've done a pretty good bit of research as far as the overlaps for the counties, and it, it would be really hard to find a good place if we did make a boundary on, on their side of the county. On our side, it's real easy, you could take one thirty-seven from twenty-seven all the way up to one thirty-six.
Right.
Which would be about two to three miles in for them, but. miles in for them, but going the other way, you'd be nitpicking each other all the time. Well, that's past the line, or they'd be nitpicking you. So, that's why I was concerned about it, because we could get in the situation with the Welburn Department where we would end up way over into Columbia County, a lot more than they'd come over into our county.
And that's, that's exactly right.
That was a concern of mine.
Yes, sir, and that's exactly right, and plus, you've got to look at, we operate completely different than any other county around us with the dual service, so you've got to realize that you're taking not only a fire truck out of pocket for Swanee County, you're also taking an ambulance out of pocket to do. So, I know on a regular basis, Columbia County calls and requests us to place an ambulance in Columbia County and wait for a call on a regular basis. We do not do that. If you have a call holding, we will go help with that call in return, but we will not send an ambulance just to sit in your county and wait for a call. So, you know, we currently help them as much as we possibly can, but like you said, we, my supervisors that are on shift every day make that determination and try to get that unit back in Swanee County as quickly as possible. So, the, the, the distance and the timeframe is based, by case basis, by the supervisor on his need. If we have calls holding, that truck is coming back into Swanee County and running calls over here and not running calls over there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Chief, would, what if Swanee County had a situation in Columbia County, would they come, coming over here to us?
Yes, sir, that agreement bodes both ways. So, if, if we had to request Columbia County, a unit from Columbia County, they would respond over to Swanee County as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question.
Summers, in that case where we would request, do we have, would this include their, their EMS services that they have?
No, sir. That's going to be a completely separate agreement, because they have a separate entity running their EMS. We do have an agreement with Century Ambulance that's been on the books for a lot of years, so that, that agreement is in place and would cover the EMS side of it.
Regardless of which county they're in?
Yes, sir. They're, it's their service in general, not necessarily their, their county operation. So, it's with Century Ambulance, not Columbia County. Since they currently have the COPCN in Columbia County, we would request through Century Ambulance, and they would send a unit.
The question I was getting at was, do we have similar services provided through our EMS? My, my understanding is that Century does not staff their, not all their ambulances are staffed dual-certified.
None, as far as, as far as fire?
So, if we have someone coming, if we have an EMS unit responding over in Swanee County through Century Ambulance, would we have, because we don't have an EMS unit maybe available, are we getting a paramedic in place?
That would be on request. We would, a lot of their, when you say dual-certified, that refers to like the fire and EMS portion. Their paramedics are basically a paramedic, and then they have an EMT truck, which is a BLS truck. They provide BLS transport, wheelchair access. When we request-
But our guys are, are, they're trained in ALS.
Sir?
Our, our guys are certified to provide-
Yes, sir. Advanced Life Support Care, yes, sir. And when we request, we would request a level that we need through their dispatch system, so if we needed an ALS transport unit or so forth, then we would request that level on request.
Any further questions for Mr. Summers? Both the wishes of the board?
Both.
We got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Second. Second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion and questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 17, thank Commissioner. Moving on to item 17, discuss possible board action in agreement with Claussen and McCo regarding construction. Are we any closer to that, Mr. Harris?
We're closer to the one with CSX, which is necessary for this, we can move to these. So, we'll be bringing those back hopefully very soon.
So, there's really nothing on that one tonight? All right.
We had one additional agenda item. It was approval of a First Amendment for General Administration Contract between Swanee County and Fred Fox Enterprises. We had another agreement with Fred Fox, we had to amend the same language.
This is new language that the CDBG office is requiring be added to all of our block rent agreements. We did this previously, this particular one needs to be done now.
Oh, we have two agreements with him? Our two CDBG?
Two that he's working on now. One for housing, one for economic development.
Which is the rail? Got any questions for Mr. Harris?
Move to approve.
Who was that, I'm sorry? Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Second.
Second.
Got the second by Commissioner Hill. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 19, public concerns and comments. Do I have anybody wishing to speak?
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. Just some, just a quick update. We need to have Randy's comments, just a suggestion, administrative comments, just prior to public comments, then I wouldn't have to be here. But, what I'm asking, basically, I know that 29th Road went out for bids, and the bid should have been received and be on the next agenda item, or next agenda.
Next, it'll be opened.
It's already open.
Opened right before that, so yes, they should be.
Where do we stand with the caution light at 49 and 136?
Jimmy, is that completed now, the design accepted?
Right, and I believe they hold up as they're waiting on procurement of the pole. The contractor has the bid in from the sub, and is just waiting on delivery of the pole.
Okay, so we're within the next three months? Conceivable.
I hope not, Senator.
Okay. Resurfacing of County Road 136 from 417 to county line going west, or east, rather? Where do we stand?
It is an out of the bid. What's the latest on that, again?
Number 136 says that the entire limits will way over the allocation of the budget, so we're trying to work out some alternative scope reduction or length reductions and try and get back down within the budget. The plans are fairly well complete, but we got to trim some back.
Me too.
I'd like to make a comment about that if I could.
Well, can I make-
Go ahead first. Yes, sir.
Listen, we just had a meeting yesterday with DOT in Lake City. In fact, Jimmy was there, Debbie was there. You remember the meeting, was it last meeting or two meetings back, when DOT came in and said, "We can only apply now for three projects a year because of the shortfall in funding," which is actually a kind way of saying that a lot of the estimating that had been done for years, using DOT's estimates on cost of construction per mile, came up short, and it's going to take a number of years yet to reconcile all of these shortages. This project that you're speaking of is one of those projects. We've asked if we can, if we save money on some projects, if we can shift that to another project that we have. Yesterday, we happened to be having a meeting on bridges. Conversation, when we got to that, didn't go very well. We know that we came in lower on some projects, and we had some money that we were saving. Our hope was that we could shift some of that money to another need in Swanee County, and the answer to that question was, no, we can't do that, because DOT still has this much longer list of projects than counties all around us that they're short on as well. So, one thing that we've been doing for at least three years is trying to scale back on the scope of work and try to make it match. In some cases, DOT has found some other money and helped us finish some projects, but unfortunately, that may not be the case going forward. So, what Mr. Pittman is saying is that he's going to try to figure out how to do a project that will satisfy our need, and at least we'll get through those horrible curves back there, Commissioner Sessions, that you're concerned with, but we may not make it all the way back. If we start at the interchange, we may not make it all the way back to 417.
The whole, the whole road, even through town, but with, I understand the issue with the city, so, but it is, it's getting worse, it's not going to get better, and that leads into another question, is where do we stand on the development of 75 and 136, the interchange there?
Well, we're still working on grant, we've got some grant funding that's been approved with the state, that was state allocation, but we've also applied with the Swanee River Water Management District, and they just notified us that we can go ahead and start preparing to apply again for an additional grant through them. So, all of that bodes well for us. As soon as we have enough funding put together, we'll look for a suitable location. We've got some ideas on that, and then go ahead and try to move forward with the development of the sewage treatment, so.
It'd be a shame if we resurfaced 136, and then we start tearing it up because we get grants for whatever, and the interchange starts developing. Then it's more, it's going to cost a lot more money. We wasted money.
Plan right now is to come from the, what would be the northeast side over near McDonald's and go under I-75, and then come back up on the other side and not go, not interfere with 137 there, or 136. So, we don't plan to destroy a new road.
Should we put a turtle bypass in? A turtle tunnel?
Yeah.
We need to.
They gave money for that.
I know, I've got strong opinions about that. I hate to do that kind of thing.
129, the lighting on that and I-10, I don't, I didn't bring my paper, so I don't know in what order those were to occur.
Yeah, I saw a lot of work up there. There, there's a lot of conduit going in underground right now up there. I just drove by the other day, and I'm believing that with that volume of electrical conduit, that it's associated with those tower lights that'll be going in there.
Now, I didn't know if that was Busy Bee, or if that was related to the lighting of the interchange.
I don't think it's Busy Bee. It looked to me like it was out in the right of way.
Took a lot of conduit and green.
Oh, yeah. And the last thing, this hasn't been talked about in quite a while, the Lime Rock Mine, because there was some issues there where we were, the commissioner hadn't just discussed looking for property for our own mine and different things. Where do we stand on that? Because I haven't heard a word since.
Nothing has changed so far. We had some fairly exhaustive meetings with representatives of the owners, and it's almost time, I think, maybe to start some conversations again, but nothing has changed so far. We still need to try to come up with an alternative approach to mining, because that is not what we're currently involved in, is not a long-term solution for Swanee County. So, we'll have to resurrect some conversations with the owners. Part of the, the timing, when this came up before, was that the owners have adjacent property that they had cleared of trees, that was a timber operation, they cleared all those. So, it was an opportunity for us to look at expanding that mine by obtaining additional land. Our approach was to try to purchase the property rather than continue this lease approach. It would have been far more advantageous for us to do that, but we couldn't come anywhere near the right numbers at the time. So, there was a death in the family. One of the parties is deceased now, so some of those that remain will probably have a conversation with us sometime soon, within the next year, and we'll try to see if we can come to any better agreement than we could back then.
I appreciate it. I just hadn't heard anything, I just wanted to get an update, and I do apologize, I didn't want to blindside Randy with this stuff, but I haven't had a chance to run him down. He never stays in one place long enough to get to him, or it doesn't seem to. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
I'd still like to make one other comment.
Yes, sir.
The portion of 136 coming into town, I think we should hold off on that as long as possible until the city can work on their infrastructure, because from 129 out, you know, there's constant re, you know, they're digging down in there, fixing a pipe, and until they redo that complete system from the edge of town all the way back to 129, the minute we pave it, they're going to cut it open and fix a pipe. So, I'm all in favor of, you know, starting back at I-10 and working our way east, or however far the money will let it go, but especially not within the city limits until they can get their infrastructure fixed.
From I-75 back west?
Or I-75 west, or, or I-10, I-10 back east.
That was actually the only portion that had previously been approved anyway. It only, that initial phase only went to 417.
It would, okay.
So, I don't know that we got the other one approved yet, did we? We applied for that, but we-
I was totally agreement about the country for the next-
For the next section, all the way back to 129? Here, here's the thing that the chairman raised when we had our conversations with the city regarding perimeter road. We talked extensively about their need to improve their sewer lines and water lines that are running under these various roads, and I think the chairman made it clear at the time, and we'll, we'll have an opportunity to go back and remind them again, that we don't have a desire to make road improvements, even in the city limits, on roads that are the county's responsibility, if they're not prepared to go ahead and address their utilities upgrades so that they can ensure that we're not in there destroying a new road. There's no one that has an interest in doing that, so I agree with Jim Turner.
We should, if we're anticipating that we're going to get approved, we should probably go ahead and give them a heads-up, that they need to start putting something together, because I don't want to be approved for it and then have to stall waiting on them.
No, I agree, and it would be at least five years out before anything would occur with it, I would think.
Yeah, and they're going to need 10 years to fix it.
You think so?
I think so.
Well, if that's the case, we need to make a visit to the city. See what they're prepared to do, because that's probably one of the grossest examples of, of, you know, this problem, and I don't know that there's one any worse than that anywhere, all those patches in that section.
From, from Lee Street End, there's 28 patches.
Yeah, it's horrible.
It's just getting cut up every time you turn around, there's a new place cutting the road, so I don't even want to touch it.
It's bad.
With our money.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment on that, too. I wouldn't disagree that the city need to do what they need to, to repair that section in the city limits, because why would you want to pave it, and, and then they come and cut it up?
Right.
But, that road, I mean, 136 need a lot of attention, when I was talking a couple weeks ago about the water how it washes out on the road. It's in, it's in a bad condition when that water flushes out. I think you want to look at it. Anybody that's coming out 136, it's, it's terrible. We don't want to see, like I said, I was concerned about safety issues, and I wouldn't want to be on that road when it raining and that, and water's washing automobiles out on the road.
Yes, sir.
Chief Summers then would be visiting, and so we don't want that to happen.
I guess if we had enough room and enough money, we could build it on piers, and they could just leave their utilities down there below. Anything else?
Moving on to administrative comments.
I've got a couple of brief comments, less than two hours. One, we have a special on sinkholes right now. We have a number of them out of Catalyst Site. My plan right now is to wait until maybe the fall. now is to wait until maybe the fall. I'm going to go ahead and plan on and budgeting for repairs to sinkholes, because we can purchase the fabric, the fabric that's used in a lot of the repairs as an alternative to grouting. Grouting's pretty expensive. And, we have repaired some out there at the catalyst site near the water plant. I went out and looked at them the other day. They're holding up better than they were. But, I think I can use a combination of fabrics and repair some of those and just take our time doing it, using our staff. Because you may recall, we spent millions out there preparing sinkholes before. And we don't have the luxury of going back and tapping into some of those same sources that we did at the time that we were developing the catalyst site. So, my approach is going to be a very conservative one. They're not in the middle of the road, they're in some of the retention ponds. And, I think over time, we will just address those, try to do it in a cost-effective manner. That's probably the only thing I really need to share with you right now, is sinkhole issue. You may be getting calls about some of the sinkholes out there. Some people get excited about them, but anymore, they don't really cause me to lose sleep.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Just one quick question. Because these are in retention sites, this water management, take a look at these sinkholes, any closer than they would anywhere, other place?
That's a great question. I'm glad that you asked that. In fact, some of you would recall that they used to have all their stormwater going into the little swamp and pond right there next to them, in that wetland. And it was okay for that to happen. But then, not long ago, they decided to go over there and just drill a hole.
Punch a hole there.
For some rapid recharge. Just dump it right into the aquifer. So, a couple of years ago, I had one of the gentlemen from Water Management ask me about a small sinkhole that we had in one of our ponds. And I told him at the time, I said, what I really would like to do is the same thing that you're doing. Just let it go. We'll just call it rapid recharge. And, he says, well, ah, that wasn't my idea. I didn't have anything to do with that. I just handled some of the calculations on it. I said, well, maybe you'd offer to handle some of the calculations for us. So, I'd be thrilled if we could do the same thing that they do. Ultimately, they would like for us to repair the sinkholes, along with some erosion problems that we have out there. And, in that particular area, we do have a lot of significant erosion in a couple of those ponds that I hope to address sometime, maybe this fall as well. But, those things have to be completely dried out before we can get in them with the equipment. So, I'm not overly concerned right now. I just want to let you know in case you get phone calls about it. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, there is one other thing.
What's that?
I wanted, just to speak for a moment on the content of our meeting yesterday, it's something that you need to be aware of. Not that there's much that we can do about it right now, but we don't have funding to repair old bridges. We have relied historically on DOT to appropriate funds. They've been very gracious over many years, but they are in a bind for funding as well. So, we've had some ongoing discussions about a couple of bridges. The one on 164th, east of 49, is one that we've had quite extensive conversations about. It's in, it's programmed for funding, or it was programmed for funding, and it just keeps going back and forth. Right now, there, we've got some agency with the federal government saying that we need, that we, the local government, need to run out there and do something. So, we had a conversation about that yesterday, because we don't have the funding to do anything. Even the remedial repairs that occurred out there on 180th, we would not be able to afford to do those. Those were done with DOT funding. I want you to be aware of that. We told them that if it gets to the point that we have to shut that bridge down, there is an alternative route out of there headed back to the north. But, we know that that area floods in there, it's low. So, they're going to have some conversations and get back with us. I want you to be aware of that. I don't envision anyone mandating that we do anything, other than maybe continuing with the posted signs that we have out there that limit it to three tons or less, or something of that nature. That doesn't mean that truck drivers have any respect for the postings out there, but that's what we have done, to comply with the requirements thus far.
Any questions for Mr. Harris? Moving on to board member comments. We'll start down here with District One. Mr. Harris, you have anything?
Anything.
Sessions?
Just want to commend Alvin for getting us a meeting with the DEO last week. We had a real quick meeting explaining to them the needs that we have in Swanee County for economic development. And he continues to push that. We went into this meeting, it was probably supposed to be a five-minute meeting, we probably, they probably gave us 15 minutes. But, we got to enunciate all of the things we thought were best for our county. And it seemed like they were more interested this time than the last time we talked to them. So, I'm just hoping that helps, like what Mr. Hancock was talking about, 136 and I-75, that was a big part of what we discussed when we were there with them last week.
Mr. Richardson?
No, I don't have anything, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to say. I just want to speak about 417, 136, on back into town also. That's all I said, had to say.
All right.
Only thing I have to say is, we had a good Fourth of July. We spent it, this, last year, we spent it live oak. This year, I spent it in Brantford watching their fireworks show and spent the day down there. Hats off to them, they did a, did a great job. I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth. And, have to say, good time. Other than that, fellas, I only need one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. All in favor, say aye.